You were supposed to turn that in.
That's right, I was fairly adamant about that.
That's my son-in-law.
It's probably, it might.
Did you put it in the box earlier?
It might be on your desk. Unless I handed it to one of y'all by accident.
Hello everyone?
Hey, hey.
How's it going now?
There's your chip.
Okay.
I'm gonna sit here and there.
Yeah, I saw the table.
We got stuff for ya.
Yes.
Let me, I got her.
I said I'm actually gonna make more rooms. Not that I don't like that, but I don't like being confined.
Did anybody grab those items that I left on the table?
Yes, yeah.
I did.
Okay, did you give them to her?
Yeah, so right here.
Perfect, thank you.
Christine?
Yes.
Where did she do it at?
Well, okay.
She doesn't show it.
I found it last night.
Oh, okay. So she had it today? Okay.
Dana?
So you guys have a floor.
That's tailored. Tailored.
Where is it?
It's going to be tailored and then we're going to do it next.
Oh, have you not altered these yet?
I'll take, I'll take the police one.
Please. Excuse me, do you have?
Shit.
Okay.
Went through some of them, I didn't get through all of them.
Yeah. I got, I got those.
I don't know if I see that I got it.
There's nothing to sign here, it's a sheet, so just so we lost.
Oh, okay.
I am trying to mention about that. I am trying to mention about that CDI, we should have done it.
Phases.
It's just being. Yeah, but I'm saying it's already been done. We should have did it. It's only six, three or four years ago.
God, stop.
Round the corner. Trumpet tree in the house.
Is that mine?
Yeah.
Got more. Hold on.
Well, see, that's one of my weird things. This is a general. So it goes in here, you transfer it over. I had to sign all of these checks to show for the transfer. I don't know why they're a little weird. But yeah, that's a check.
Hey Barrett, you sent the business card to the police, I'm actually gonna hurt when they put it.
Yeah.
And it's been corrected?
And it's been corrected.
Okay.
And I told Gina about that too.
Thank you. I still wish they would start fixing that.
Sure, one of these. We need a big table, I'm telling you. Janet.
Oh yes.
I think, I think we're just saying on the line. After this thing. Doing it all electronically.
I get all mine on trial.
I know, you scan it and it shows up in there as PDF, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tight, it's tiny.
I got this thing. I had it. And you hate to see you touch your this type of water stamp today.
Have everything. Yep.
Have you heard from anybody?
Hi, what do you need? I heard, I talked with her last week, I think, briefly. I want to know that, yeah, we're, the project, you know, opening the 28th, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yes.
Greg, I didn't even recognize you sitting there, man. I've been looking at you the whole time.
What's that? I mean, I talked to her very often. She called me, I think, last week, or maybe even the week before that.
I said it was kind of thing, I don't think she responded, which is unusual.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and go here in a minute.
You can go ahead and start wherever you want.
I'll start first with finance. The meeting was called at order on the September 27th. Under old business, the committee discussed a possible rate increase for the sewers. For the sewer rate, it was five percent every five years, committee agreed to send it to council, that's on tonight's agenda. Mayor Cox asked some of the committee's input as a resident requested a street council to discuss about the cost of the city and to, and also for public safety. The committee would like more information about the regulations on lighting. Committee discussed proposed changes from Alderman and Cochran regarding updating the ordinance on toilet. State law charge is fifteen cents a page. And we have something to do with toilet tonight. The committee also discussed that proposed changes on Resolution 2018-6 regarding public comments. The suggested changes would be to change to five minutes instead of three minutes. There's also noted that ordinances need to be updated in the state law. Alderman and Cochran would like to know how the mayor's spending limit is set and noted that there should be an ordinance on the spend limit. It came in for half the American Rescue Act money has been received. The committee discussed the tornado sirens, the committee would like to know the amount in the tip funds. Alderman and Cox discussed the IMR conference and the update on infrastructure items such as broadband and charging stations was a topic of discussion. The insurance has denied a claim for damage to a resident's vehicle. The committee discussed ordinance and possibly what changes are necessary or could be updated. There have been four applicants for treasurer, committee would like to interview the applicants and appoint a treasurer in the near future. Yeah, our sewer dispersment, the Petersburg plummet $295,548.51. Engineering is $19,731.56 for a total of $315,318.7. Gilson had a concrete bid from Hughes excavating and it was received for $215, Serra Street. Price is $3,600. Price for 111, 113, and 115, South Chestnut is $6,480. If the tip fund is used to, is used to help pay for the sidewalk in front of the businesses on Chestnut Street. A 50/50 would need to be available for the residents. Price would be $9 a square foot, $9.50 a square foot around the driveway. It was noted that 205 paupers would be on the list for the 50/50 if they wanted to pursue it. Concrete bid for CL Rhodes was received for $215, South Serra Street. Price is $8,780. Price for 111, 113, 115, South Chestnut Street is $10,080. Price for 50/50 sidewalk would be $15.25 square foot. $17.25 per six inch thick concrete. The sidewalk price would be placed on the agenda for council. And it is. Committee was updated regarding the funds on the IMRF audit and official letter will be received regarding the changes needed. And public commented if updating ordinances is cost-effective. We adjourned at 7:11 PM and our next finance meeting is on Monday, October 25th, 6:30.
Street committee meeting. Under old business, in September, the dumpster days and rubbish sales were successful. Under new business, Joyce Thornton represented an issue to the street committee. Joyce asked the committee about the concrete north side of her building on 201, South Chestnut. The concrete on the south side of the building has helped with the water damage issue. Joyce received a quote for concrete from Tim Castle for approximately $9,100. Joyce asked the city if we would consider paying for a part of the concrete. The committee was in agreement and would like to send it to finance for paying half the price out of tip for up to $4,000. Joyce mentioned she is working on signage for her building. The city signs at the edge of Route 51, where discussed for possible lighting, it's recommended solar lighting as this option. The committee discussed the holes around town and the need to be filling the holes in the streets and alleys. Mayor Cox discussed the lead issue with the owner of Barnes Elementary School. There's been numerous complaints about the heat. Mayor Cox asked Barnes moving service to spray the streets and send the bill to the city. Trumper Tree will be held October 30th from 4 to 6 on Walnut Street. Mayor Cox received the resignation from Alderman and Coslin effective immediately due to health issues. Oiling and shipping is done for the year. The concrete bids from Hughes and CL Rhodes during distribution to Chestnut. The sidewalk at 101 North Locust was discussed due to a trip hazard. The street superintendent would like to Alderman to discuss blood trip hazard committee repair. The committee discussed the Locust Street apartments and the cost to put it in a curb. Our next meeting for streets will be Wednesday, October 13th at 6:30.
Water committee meeting was held on September 21st, there was no old business. Under new business, a phone conference with the Attorney General for the Nitrate Vessels will be scheduled in the near future to discuss the upcoming deadline. Possible delivery date for the nitrate vessels will be January, but is subject to change. The water chairman would like to attend the phone conference also, and I am scheduled for that. The drain near the vet clinic will need to be repaired in the near future. The committee was updated about the low water pressure on First Street, a valve was not turned on all the way, it's since rectified. Water department continues with the collections on water bills, the next shut-off day is September 25th. An emergency repair is needed at the Leafland pump station. Mark Bing gave an update on the La Rochelle project, bids will be advertised and approval award will be placed on the November council agenda. Mark updated the committee on water phase one, a meter pit was replaced outside city limits. The meter pit is not loan-eligible at this time and the cost was $3,853.78. The committee discussed the water plant, Mark would like the committee or council to come to a consensus on the water plant plans. The pole barn or block building was discussed and also the cost of each. There will need to be a discussion on a sidewalk or concrete approach, fencing, and signage. There was a sewer dispersment in the total amount of $315,280.7. There have been 100% of the sewer mains installed for sanitary sewer phase one. The next step is to work on restoration of pavement and seating. The committee discussed Samuel Street and the repairs already made. The issues will need to be looked over and discussed. An issue at 210 South Business 51 was also discussed. Mark updated the committee regarding sanitary sewer phase two project, he's still waiting on feedback from the EPA on the proposed ordinance. The plan is to start the bid process during the winter months with an approximate start date in spring of 2022. There have been issues with residents spilling grass onto the roads, the committee suggested possibly updating the ordinance. Meeting adjourned at 7:28 PM and the next water meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 19th, 6:30 PM. Under the police, there was no old business, the police department continues to watch the school traffic and assist when needed. Training opportunities will increase in the near future due to the upcoming new mandates. A grant was received from AMR for $1,200. The officers continue to work on speeding issues in town. The new squad cars continuing to wait for parts, the repair is under warranty. The committee discussed the number of serious accidents lately. Everyone was reminded to watch out for farm equipment and drive safely in the country. The police reminded everyone to please call 911 in the event of an emergency or call the Christian County Sheriff's Office instead of calling the officer's phones. The committee was discussed, discussed. Trumpertree will be held on October 30th from 4 to 6 on Walnut Street. Trumper Tree hours will follow after that. The trick-or-treating hours will be after Trumper Tree. Saturday, October 9th is the first annual golf outing for the Back to Blue fundraiser for the local police department, starting at 9:00 AM. The cost is $45 a person and the meal will be held at the parish hall following the golf outing. Committee adjourned at 6:54. The next meeting is... Police is Tuesday, October 12th at 6:30, City Hall.
Mine have a flat spot.
It's not the first time they've done that.
Oh, no, yeah, whole kit, yeah, whole kit.
All right, seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting in order, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here.
Reed, here.
Stewart, here.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September first, twenty twenty-one council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Stewart.
Yes.
Paige.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hawthorne.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting, September seventh, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Reed.
Yes.
Hawthorne.
Yes.
Stewart, yes, or just, yes. Paige.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like a motion to approve payment of the bills as they appear on the warrant sheets.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
And I will say there was a couple of questions, I was up at city hall last night signing the checks. We have gotten those questions resolved. There was one little mistake and the accountant got it corrected. Joe had a question on the motor fuel tax, so we're good. Thank you, everybody.
Burgess.
Yes.
Paige.
Yes.
Hawthorne.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Okay, is there any public comments on the agenda items? Sir, I noticed you got appointments for treasurer and the committee reports were read. Maybe I didn't hear correctly, but the committee was wanting to interview the applicants. Does that interview already taken place or is that not going to be done?
We got, during finance, we got their resumes and then the resumes was also sent out to all of the aldermen. The plan is, I mean, it can also change, is that we will also interview the, all of the candidates today during executive session.
Okay, so you're going to do that version, okay.
Yeah, and then after we did the interview process, then we'll go back into regular session, bring them in, swear them in, do all that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I do.
Sir.
I see that you have an appointment for an older person for Ward two.
Yes.
I am interested in, I'd like to, if my name for possible nomination for going in the sponsor bar conference vacated.
So advised. I've also got a letter from one of my constituents in my ward, Ward two. Herb Palmer is also interested in serving as assumption in, as Ward two alderman. It would have been nice, I mean, I'm going to take all people into consideration. But getting it five minutes before we bring it to the table, you know. I know when I ran for alderman, I was pretty enthusiastic and I was knocking on doors and, and going out of my way to advise the public that I was interested. I, Mr. Baker has been to two meetings and when I asked him if he had anything, he's never ever brought it up till just now. And I hadn't, I mean, me and Herb talk every time we see each other, but he's not mentioned anything to me either. I think that's poor timing on their part.
Well, Herb has mentioned it to me and has talked.
Did you mention it to me?
No, I did not.
Okay, well, then I can't read your mind.
It's not up to me to mention that, it's up to them.
Well, then the mayor does the nominating, you know, it would have been nice to know that there was more people to nominate. So, okay, moving on.
I think there's also another comment back here.
Sir.
Hi, Greg Reed. Just like Sean and Herb, I'd like to be considered for the position of alderman of Ward two. I have ran for alderman, in fact, the last election where Barb was reelected, I ran against Barb. Obviously, at that point, I showed enthusiasm, I showed the want to be an alderman. Shortly after that election, there was a, the mayor stepped down. Donovan Dust was appointed as mayor and then there was appointment made for that alderman spot that he vacated. Now, I wasn't approached or asked, even though I had just ran for alderman. Would have been logical to appoint me as alderman, but that did not happen. You appointed another person who didn't run and as far as I know, has never ran for alderman. And until this last election, when she ran against Joe. I was never approached or asked or done or anything to be alderman. In fact, I didn't even realize there was, I had heard that Barb was sick unfortunate situation, she was sick. Didn't even know about her stepping down until just recently. So if there was a time period to get names in or anything, well, I guess I would ask a question. Why wasn't that ever brought out or why wasn't ever brought up that that was a possibility?
Well, if it was, if it was of significant importance to you, your alderman lives right across the street.
Actually, he lives down the block.
Okay, but a few feet.
But still, I mean, everything else is put on Facebook about meetings and this and that, what sanitary stuff is going on, what Petersburg plumbing is doing and things like that. I would think that with full transparency, that you would put that out there saying that we're accepting possible nominations for alderman. Any interest of parties should contact the mayor, a board member, board janitor at the village hall so she can pass the message along. But that's neither here nor there, I'd just like for the opportunity to maybe go through a real process of appointing an alderman instead of, you know, like a fly by night. Just appoint this person and not give.
Well, we don't think it's a, I don't think it's a fly by night and, you know, you, sir, could have contacted me and showed your interest as well. You know, I'm sure, you haven't been to a meeting until now.
I mean.
So they don't wash my Facebook on just Facebook feed.
Okay, then you should have knew that the alderman, we've talked about Barb being ill for several months.
So when did she commit her resignation?
Well, let me tell you.
Well, in his defense, but all the video feeds that we've been transmitting on Facebook have had severe audio issues.
That's not, that's not my fault.
In video feed, so.
Nine eleven twenty-one.
So that would have been after the last working, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
So it's a little less than a month.
My suggestion, since we have people.
Thank you.
Since we have people who are interested, we table this until next month and it gives everybody the chance to come and talk to us.
I disagree.
I think that's only fair.
No, the mayor, I'm going to make that decision, I make the nomination and the board votes on it.
Yes. And suggestions would also like to be considered for alderman of Ward two. I did serve as alderman of Ward two with Dust and several of you on here. Did several things for the community, up to speed signs, up to code. The veterans now do not have to pay for golf cart fees of fifty dollars a year as they've already paid their duty to our country. So that is free for any veteran that would like to have a golf cart here in town. And also, I have done what I said I was going to do. I said whether I had a seat on that side of the table or this side of the table, I would have a seat and I would continue to come to the meetings and support the community. And that's exactly what I've done, I've been to every meeting, but still been involved, still wanting to push for change, whether it be speed limit, you name it. So I would like to be considered for alderman for Ward two.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We got other comments. Sir.
Just have a quick question in regards to this appointment, is this a lame duck appointment? Understand there's rumors that you're planning on resigning.
That is irrelevant.
The question is, is this a lame duck appointment? Because if you're going to resign, I think the public should know this is a lame duck appointment.
No, that, that's really, that's not it at all. Regardless of what I want to do, I mean, at this point in time, I don't want to be rude, but it's none of your business.
So the answer is yes, you're resigning?
That's neither here nor there, I guess you'll have to stay for the meeting to find out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're, no, you're welcome. Okay, treasurers report. Obviously, we, the accountant has done his part. Mayor's comments, the only thing I have at this point in time is, I would, we had a tragedy on Locust Street. Time I got there from work, the first responders was already there, chief and Pete and seven, I believe, seven different fire departments. Honestly, I've, you know, I've worked for the police department for several years, but I never got to see the men and women, how brave they were fighting that fire and doing what they do. Still gives me chills. You know, like I said, the fatality, I, I mean, there's nothing worse, but I was very proud of you guys and all the fire departments and the E M Ts that was there, it was, it was amazing to see what you guys actually do. I mean, you know, anyone can see training or watch TV, but when it's in real life, it's a whole different situation. And like I said, my, my hat goes off to all of you first responders.
And I can attest to that because I was off that day and I witnessed it as well. And also, Jack was there along with Dana, was there to watch for our water issues that we would have. So I do have to take my hat to, to all of the employees and to you guys too.
City attorney.
I just have a couple of quick comments. It was brought to my attention, Joe pointed out that I had misstated to everybody. I don't know if it was at a meeting or a discussion thereafter, but it was my, my misunderstanding rather that the city is a strong mayor or former government and to those in the, the audience that might not know, that's just a classification of the way that some of the managerial decisions get run. Joe brought that to my attention, that was my misunderstanding based on a, a discussion I had with the prior city attorney when, when kind of the file got handed off. We dug some digging into that, so I apologize and want everybody to know that, for those that are paying attention, this is aldermanic form. Again, if you've got questions about that, I'm happy to answer it in Google, you know, aldermanic form. So Joe, thanks for bringing that to my attention. The other thing that I want to talk about and maybe tonight's not the night, but I think there has been a lot of maybe miscommunication or misunderstanding or compounding of both as to the role that the city council wants me to play in conducting city business. And, you know, I'm honored to be here, I appreciate the opportunity, I like the city. But really, I, I serve you guys, you know, I'm here to help you guys accomplish your goals, you know, we've got a lot of, we got a lot of irons in the fire, you know, whether it's property related, ordinance violations, changing, you know, resolutions and doing things, you know. I'm here to serve your guys' needs. I think that there was some miscommunication and maybe misunderstanding again on my part as to where, where you guys want me to be on that. Again, I think Joe and I kind of talked about kind of where some things fell off between the two of us. Hopefully, Joe and I have that kind of figured out between the two of us. But I think if you guys have a specific request for me to draft something, you know, redline something, research something, just want to, you know, shoot something off the wall and, and see kind of what my thoughts are on it, just let me know directly. I think that, that way we're not losing any, you know, communication going between people and, and there's not a instance where, you know, things get missed. Because again, I can only be as good as what you guys expect me to be. And, you know, I want to be here for you guys and want to be able to answer all your questions and, you know, just making sure that I'm serving you guys as really the policymakers here as best I can. So if you've got a question or, you know, want me to prepare something, please come to me or shoot me an email directly and I'm more than happy to work with you guys on stuff. So I think we've prepared some ordinances and resolutions for discussion and consideration tonight. But, you know, I'm happy to talk about those as they come up if, if anybody has questions. Does anybody have any questions of me, I guess, just based on that? I mean, just want to make sure that I'm available to you guys to, you know, conduct the business that you guys see fit.
Thank you for your service so far.
Yeah, thank you. All right, new business, first. I'm, the first thing on the list is appointment of older person for Ward two. And like I said, I brought, I can't honestly remember what meeting I brought it up in. like I said, I brought, I can't honestly remember what meeting I brought it up in, but when I, I had it put on the agenda, and I know it's been.
You read it at Street's, you read a resignation letter at Street's.
Right, so I, you know, I can't remember the date. I'm not gonna.
Let me talk about it.
And like I said, folks, it, it isn't nothing against Mr. Reed or Mr. Baker or Herbie. You know, I have one person call me, text me, come to my house, and it was Candy Smith. So to me, finding out tonight is irrelevant, because this has been on our agenda, and no, I did not personally go door to door and tell people that Alderman Coughlin had to step down due to illness, but I wish Alderman Coughlin was still here, because she was an asset to this board. So, you know, with that being said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve Candy Smith as alderman in Ward Two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Can we have a discussion about this, or is it?
No, we can have a discussion.
Okay. Do we? So my only comment is, you know, I ran against Candy in the last election. She was appointed originally, the voters voted her out of office, and now you're wanting to reappoint her after she's been elected.
Joey luckily won by 13 votes. It wasn't like it was a landslide.
But the voters spoke.
Right.
She lost the election.
You know what? I lost the first time I ran. Alan Hayes.
And now you want to reappoint somebody who was appointed. Only person they were in that office in the first place is because they were appointed. I think that we need to move forward, not backwards.
I'm moving forward. I'm appointing her again. That's the discussion.
Who has the floor right now?
I'm not sure, because we were told that.
Every time I talk, I eat talk over myself.
Well, finish your speech, because I'm still gonna follow through with what I've got a motion to set.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm talking to the board. So Candy was appointed, she was voted out of office, and now the mayor is wanting to reappoint her. Do you see where that process breakdown is kind of backwards? Does anybody see that, or is it just me?
She did a great job.
She was voted out of office.
She accomplished more in a year and a half, she accomplished more in a year and a half with us than, since I've been on what any other alderman's.
Do you know how many meetings she came to when she was in?
She's come to several. How many meetings have people that did not win an election?
Because the reason I ran against her, so you know, is because I heard from constituents in my ward that she was missing a bunch of meetings.
Her dad.
So.
Excuse me.
Do you know who has the floor right now? It's me.
Do you know the context? Do you know the context and why she missed those meetings?
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does, very much.
She missed seven out of 22.
Would you like to know the context?
I do know the context. She called me, she's told me. But seven out of 22 meetings is one-third of the meetings since when she was appointed. I'm just throwing that out there. So you're saying she did a lot for the town, but to, to do this position, one of our jobs is showing up to the meetings and voting. And as far as I know, she missed nearly a third of the meetings, according to my records, based on what my constituents told me, so. That's all I have to say.
Well, I also, Joe, you're a phenomenal alderman. You have learned so much within these last couple of months since you've gotten elected. And, you know, and Candy, she was a phenomenal alderman. Ward Two will be definitely one of the best represented wards by you guys and your tenacity for government. I mean, I had the honor of going up to put you to IML. I mean, we talked about a lot of the plans for the city. I mean, and Candy herself, she has called me numerous times, together with you, with putting everything aside, the election, you guys will do great things for the city. You will do great things for your ward and for your people. I truly do believe that. And I assure Candy, and Candy has even assured me too, that we're, that she's gonna set aside anything, any differences that she has. So I think that with you two being the great bulldogs that you are, being respectful and everything, is great for this community. That's all I have.
Very good, very good. What about the other people who has shown interest?
They will have to pull a petition and run next time if Candy gets voted in.
Their, their desire to represent this ward means nothing to anyone.
Their desire, they, they never even contacted me one time, so they should have had a little bit more desire.
Sean Baker showed desire when Candy was appointed. He was there, he came to all those meetings.
I'm not gonna break up how you voted.
I was there, I was too. I didn't know Sean at the time.
Oh, well, I'm glad you know him now, but we got a motion and we got a second.
So we need to get going.
So let's move.
All right, Joe.
No.
Stewart.
Present.
Burgess, no. Reed.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
So we have a tie. In the instance of a tie, the mayor gets to cast the breaking decision.
Welcome back, Alderman Smith. So if you have the paperwork, Janet, we'll let Jordan swear Candy back in. Candy, with you, please come up here.
Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, Candy Smith.
I, Candy Smith.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderperson.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderperson.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Candy, if you want to grab your paperwork, you're welcome back. You can sit by me, I don't bite hard. All right, so moving on, I need a motion, the trick-or-treat hours, they've already discussed, will be, the trunk-or-tree will be from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and then trick-or-treat hours will be from 6:00 to 8:00 following trunk-or-tree.
Yeah, that's correct. So trunk-or-tree will be held on Walnut Street, going north and south, and trunk-or-tree will be afterwards, so we're doing it just one night this year. It's on the 30th, so it'll be on Saturday.
I just need a motion for that.
I'll look, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Puffrey.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, the agreement for TIP fund for 201 South Chestnut, the concrete That's the one with Hughes?
You know, what, what this is, is that this is a TIP agreement that we have with Joyce Throneberg for her new business that's coming in. What it is, is that, we actually, we have two things going on with her. We have two different TIPS. One is, is that she's giving some money back to, of course, property taxes, and then this one is for the concrete. We had agreed to give her $4,000, and when she, it's a 50% agreement, lift her to pay for the new concrete that will be used for parking, and it also helps lift the drainage there on that side of the building to the north. So we, we have to approve both. We have to approve the agreement, from my understanding, and then actually approve releasing the funds for the TIP agreement. I also do want to say, until we get a treasurer, we are spending quite a bit of money from the, out of our TIP fund, so I'm kind of asking for a little bit of maybe a hiatus on sending out some, you know, doing new TIP projects. I know we got, made budgeted money for the facade, which we're cool with that, but we did have a little bit of a surplus fund, just until we get a treasurer and we know how much is in that account. So I don't see that being a problem. I will say, we had talked about doing a tornado siren out of TIP for the fire department. We might have to put that on hold just a bit. I also learned too, that, and I was under the impression that we could use it as a facilities upgrade, we could use our ARPA money, which is from the American Rescue Plan. We cannot, so we're kind of hoping that we get this Banger grant for the tornado siren. But we can also still help the fire department, you know, with the TIP for, for a grant for the tornado siren, but we just better sit and wait till we get a treasurer, so we know how much is in there.
Okay, so we need a motion for the TIP fund, the $4,000.
Yeah, is this, this is the resolution approving it, right?
Do the resolution, approve the agreement of Joyce.
Of Joyce, okay. So we have to do two.
The resolution 2021-6.
2021-6. All right, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Stewart.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Puffrey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Okay, now we need to.
Now we'd be approving actually the concrete agreement through releasing the TIP funds to Joyce, so. And if you look at it, it's really nice, it's already been poured. So, and the plan is that the business will open, the restaurant will open by the first of the year. One other great thing for us.
Thanks to Joyce.
Yeah. So, well, I'll make the motion to approve the 201 South Chestnut concrete agreement.
I'll second that. Smith.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Puffrey.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve the sidewalk concrete quote for 215 Sarah Street, and then it's 111, 113, and 115 Chestnut. And that's where we got the two bids.
Yeah, so we will end up going with Hughes, because they are the cheapest. They're out of paint.
And was that the one that was?
Well, it's, it's kind of.
Kind of around the 480 or?
Uh, yes. The price is 3,600, oh, that's for 215 Sarah Street, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's $6,480. Then we can also use, this is one of the last things that we've agreed upon using part of TIP funds, since it is all for our downtown area for it, so it's using a little bit of both from TIP funds and from our regular sidewalk budget.
216.
Yeah, 6480.
And Rose was $10,000.
$10,080. We are getting a significant savings.
So if you want to make that motion, that would be, or somebody, please.
So are these, these addresses, are those municipal addresses, or is that the 2, Sarah Street?
1113, 1111, those places downtown.
Yeah, we can't use TIP funds for 215 Sarah Street.
No.
We can only use it for the ones downtown.
That's the one we're talking about, that's Mr. Elders.
Yes.
Elders, yes.
What is the?
His price is $3,600.
What's the 215 Sarah Street?
That's Mr. Elder.
Okay.
That's the elder.
And that was already in agreement for a while.
Well, actually, Mayor Dust had been in agreement, in fact, and I think Alderman Burgess had brought it up, and then Don followed through with it, and then the board decided, you know, hey, you know, Don had already talked to him and we hadn't, and come to agreement, so that's why we went ahead and moved on with that.
Okay, that makes sense.
So did I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second. Is the motion for both of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to do a 1-1 roll call?
I didn't know. We got TIP on the next one.
Well, I think, yeah, I think. Well, no, let's not, because one's 215 Sarah Street. Let's keep them separate. Yeah.
Yes.
Puffrey.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Okay, the second one is motion to approve TIP fund payment for 111, 113, and 115 Chestnut Street sidewalk.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Okay, the next would be the FOIA ordinance.
What about the TIP one?
Oh, we just did that. We just did that.
So moving on to FOIA ordinance, I need a motion.
Yeah, I'll say I, I like it. It does, I did talk to Alderman Joe about this, and there was one thing I had a question on, he was able to answer it, and I'm happy with it. I mean, it does codify us with state law, and with what anybody wants to do with FOIA, we have Janet now to help with that.
I'll make the motion if you want to. Or did you want to, Joe?
I can make the motion to approve the FOIA ordinance.
Okay. Stewart.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Puffrey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Okay, and then next is the resolution for public comments, and I think that's from three minutes to five minutes, or.
It can't be longer than 60 minutes.
I'll make the motion for the resolution for public comments.
I'll second that.
Burgess.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Puffrey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roger, can I interject a little bit? While we're on the ordinances, I think, and maybe Janet, I sent it to you a while back, and I don't remember, but just before it slips my mind, I had called our publishing company for the ordinances to talk about, you know, how much it costs, because I think somebody in the audience had asked, how much does it cost to actually like physically update the books and then maintain that, and what are the options if we wanted to, you know, publish some stuff online? I think some of the aldermen were interested in maybe going that route. So I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I have made that call, and I think I sent an email to Janet that maybe she can forward on. I think it's pretty reasonable to not only update the books, I think they recommend it, you know, quarterly or, you know, twice a year.
Once a year.
Once a year. And then if we wanted to go, you know, fully electronic, and again, if you look at municipalities, they have all of their ordinances online, it's, it's great. I mean, the search features are awesome, it's really well organized, it's pretty cost-effective too, so that's something that we can, you know, continue to talk with. We have a rep with the publishing company that said they're happy to, you know, work with us to, you know, get things moved over, and if that's something that you guys want to, want to consider, so.
We definitely need to update our ordinances. They are, they, some of them are back in the 70s.
Oh, we've got more older than that, I guarantee.
I know, but, but that's just, we need to update them.
I've also got a comment regarding the ordinances, because I know that was brought up too, so I actually talked to the, the people, American Legal Publishing, when I was up at IML conference, and we had a discussion about it. We talked about just what you said, Jordan, about putting it online and all that stuff, but we can actually, we've actually already changed over our ordinance quote to a digital copy, so now all we really have to do is we can publish it. So now all we really have to do is we can publish it on our own website, and it's a PDF searchable document, so with no extra charge, we can just publish it on our, on our website. You can go and view it there, you can search it, do whatever. We update it once a year, and the cost to update it, the ordinances, I found out, was 18 to $22 per page if we go that route. So it's not, you're exactly right, Jordan, it is not abundantly expensive to do. The most expensive part is drafting the ordinances, and that's where I've been trying to take some weight off of Jordan to save the taxpayers' money by doing all the hard work, and then I send it to him, and he does hard work too. I'm not saying not all the hard work.
I just make it look...
He makes it legally sufficient. So I think me and him have got a system going now, where we're going kicking it back and forth. I find what I need, and then I send it over to him, and he makes sure it's legally sufficient, but 18 to $22 per page, Candy, is how much it costs.
Yeah, Janet shared that. You were concerned about that.
You were concerned about that before.
Janet shared that at the last meeting, and then the attorney cost is not included in that 18 to 22, right?
That is correct, yeah. But that's why, that's why I've been doing the drafting work, and then I send it over to him, and he just makes sure it's legally sufficient, researches it, and he puts it in this beautiful little form.
I'm glad we all know the cost, because at one time nobody knew it, so thank you for looking into that.
Thanks for asking a question.
Okay, moving on.
I'm going to ask for the mayor's spending limits ordinance. Joe and I have actually been working on this, and one thing that we found out when we went to IML, we actually met quite a few different, you know, city council members, mayors, we probably asked at least 10 different people how they did things. So I'm going to work with Joe over, you know, this month, and I'd say we just table it until the November council meeting, and we'll have something written then. We do have something from Taylorville, how they do it, and it's really well. I think it'll work well for our superintendents, for the mayor, Janet, and I think for us too. So we'll just work on it over this month, and we'll have something ready next in November.
Yeah, and Joe, you would ask me to specifically look at some of the communities, other communities that my firm represents. I followed up with those, and the only indication of an independent spending authority by the mayor was one of my communities had a, you know, a meeting minute saying, hey, we have this, it's part of what we do, but I wasn't able to find anything, you know, codified either at an ordinance or resolution level. So I think, you know, Taylorville's got a sample that you guys like, I'd say, you know, crib from that.
I actually, I actually already got it. At the IML meeting, I met some other persons from Taylorville, and they actually today just sent me what they have in a resolution, is what they have drafted out, and Derek probably handed it to you.
Yeah, I did.
And I, I kind of went over it, and I made it tailored to a smaller municipality like we are, because their spending limits were more, because they're 10 times the size of ours. So I kind of drafted it down to a tenth of the size, and this is just the starting point. As you can see, my draft has public comments at the top, that's not, I just used your form.
Uh-oh. Come on, you're the one who made it to do.
It's a rough draft, but it's somewhere to start, and I agree with Derek. We learned so much while we were at that conference, and I would like to do something kind of like what Taylorville does, and then that other city that was up north had a voucher system.
They did have a voucher system, yes.
I liked that idea.
So what it would be is, is that the superintendent, he had to spend, let's say, $250, he notified his chairman, chairman would then fill out a voucher system, would fill out a voucher, and then they would go on to the treasurer. And of course then, and then when the receipts would come in, they'd follow it, and then of course the mayor would still end up seeing it, because there would be two signatures on the voucher. So those are some things that we've been kind of tossing around, and, you know.
We'll table it.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we'll table it until, we'll start talking about it at all of the committees this month, so that all the directors are aware of it. Yes, and if they want changes for themselves, we'll work on that.
Okay. Next is grass clipping ordinance. They tweaked that, I know since Mittsindorfer brought it up several times while he worked for the city, you know, the people that turn their mower and just blow it deliberately in the street, you know, it is a safety hazard for motorcycle, you know, riders, and, you know, I mean, it's just a, probably several different hazards, but that's the main one I can think of, but, so I think Joe and the other aldermen came into agreement, and they tweaked the ordinance, so.
I just have a comment about this, and I was talking to Alderman Page about this, is I think that Jordan drafted this up on his own, I didn't draft this, I just asked him to put something together for us, because our ordinance is kind of funky and wonky, where it's listed at for the, there was nothing about grass clippings, as Dana pointed out, and we wanted to make sure it was consistent with state law. But also, I think that you had mentioned, Jordan, that we could put something in here as far as a violation, and I think that we need to work with, take this to the police committee meeting, and come up with something with them, get their thoughts on what a violation we could put in here, and we'll talk about that at police. So I recommend that we, we actually table this ordinance too. That's my recommendation, so we can go over with police, so, get their input.
Ready?
Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
We need to approve the, a motion to approve the emergency repairs that, at the Leefland Pump Station. I don't have, was that the 3,000 or...
No, I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to be able to make any motions on it today, it's ongoing. The Water Board Committee's chairman is aware of where we're at, so.
I think we just want to make sure everybody was aware that we're there, you know, there are some emergency repairs that we have to do at the Leefland Pump Station, it's been discussed at the Water Committee meeting, we don't have the, the costs determined at the Water Committee meeting, I expect we'll have those, and then we're, you know, good to go, so.
Just table that as well, and you can keep everyone informed. Next is the water supply loan program ordinance agreement.
I can, this is, I can go over it.
Do you want to talk about this, Mark?
Yeah, so this is for the next water project, you know, we're talking about the water plant, and we also, you know, talked about doing some water main replacement, right now we're, you know, definitely talking about the water treatment plant. This just allows, this is an EPA loan agreement that allows the city to enter into the agreement, you know, when that time is, you know, ready. We've passed this for a number of other, you know, the EPA loan programs, but that's what this, this agreement is for, is allows the city to enter into that agreement when we get that agreement in six months. This is required by the EPA loan program.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. So you, a motion to approve the water supply loan, I'll make the motion.
769. 769. Burgess?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, next is the motion for the sewer rate increase ordinance.
I can go over this again. So this has been discussed the past couple of months. We had an ordinance that, you know, January, we were supposed to implement a 30% rate increase. We have not, we have not done that. So this ordinance actually sort of steps that back and implements a 5% increase annually to be reviewed by the board, but that's what this increase is, and we have had some correspondence back with EPA, so I'm, you know, we're ready to, you know, pass this ordinance. They're, they're still going to review and critique it as we get, you know, get through the, you know, get to where we're doing the sewer phase two, but we need to get this, what was done before for the sewer phase one, now we, now we know we, we're getting that principal forgiveness, we don't have to do that 30%, so we just get this, this ordinance, correct it and end it and move forward.
Thank you, Mark. I'll make a motion for the sewer rate increase ordinance. Second. Cochran?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, and next on the sewer dispersment, if my numbers are correct, Petersburg Plumbing Engineering fees was $19,731.56, for the total of $315,280.07. Okay, next on the agenda, we got approved, eh? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Page?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is, the board is going to talk to the individuals that are, have submitted an application for treasurer. We are going to go into executive session, but what I need, you guys, everyone is welcome back when we go back into regular session, but I, I think it's only fair to the...
Can we move this to the...
Okay. Well, I didn't, I didn't know if they wanted to come. Okay, next is discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system phase one project item as properly brought to the board.
Yeah, so this is just an update, you know, we do have all the sewer mains installed, we have, the sewer services are now all installed, so there's, you know, absolutely, you know, cleanup, making sure everybody's happy with the, you know, different concrete work that we've done. There's some concrete work that's been finished, there's more to be completed, and then asphalting, you know, all the patches, and getting ill and oily street done, you know, doing the final seeding and getting the grading to, you know, where it looks, looks nice. So that's just an update of where the sewer phase one project is, you know, it's, all the mains and the services are finally installed, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then discussion and action is necessary on water system improvements, project items is properly brought to the board.
So this is, you know, the water, water phase one project, as we've been calling it, so, water main that was on First Street, that is, you know, is finished a long time ago. Water meters are finished, and then we're still waiting on the nitrate project, you know, as it's, as it's, you know, continuing, moving forward. Current delivery date is somewhere around December, January for the nitrate vessels.
I'm going to drag that real quick. The water main that was put in, it also coincided with the sidewalk, they went through there and some curb work, a couple of people have asked me about getting those sidewalks and curbs and stuff backwards, or, and we talked about if they're going to come in here and do that, so. If anybody talks to you about it, it's coming.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mark, is this a good time to talk about the EPA meeting that we have coming up?
Oh, I think it's good to, good to mention it. So the nitrate removal project, you know, going back two years ago, we, you know, we were looking at, you know, just getting nitrate removal vessels in the, in the old water treatment plant. Then, you know, after that, you know, that occurred, then there were some other grant opportunities that have, that have come out, and then, and the, you know, the City of Assumptions Water Plant is 1950s, 60s vintage, you know, it's, it's needed upgraded, upgrades for 30 years, and so that's really, you know, moves into, you know, sewer, or sorry, water phase two project, where we're talking about a new water treatment plant. So what Jordan just, just inclined was, you know, we have a conference call with the Attorney General and the EPA, I'm not sure actually who all is involved on the call with, on their side of it, but we've had one of these calls before, and we've also been, you know, had meetings with the EPA before COVID, and, you know, now it's a conference call. So it's, you know, just to give them an update of where the project is, and we are asking for an extension on the time because of the water treatment plant project, so. Hopefully that sums it up.
Okay, water system improvements, phase two, new water plant building?
Yeah, so for this one, I really just want to, you know, at the Water Committee meeting, I alluded to, you know, we, and as I just mentioned, we're doing new water treatment plants, and, you know, I really like some discussions, you know, from the board on, you know, what we want the water plant to look like, you know, so I can, you know, start preparing something that is presentable, that I can, you know, show and present. So at the, at the Water Committee meeting, we talked about a, you know, a block building, we talked about a, you know, kind of a metal pole barn building, talked about, you know, rather than a, so the, the building needs to be about 16 to 18, 18 feet tall, just for the, you know, the new, new filter equipment. So, you know, it is, where it's going to be located, you know, right off of 51, it would, you know, it'd be a very large front face, you know, it talked about maybe putting a, you know, kind of an office area in front of it, to kind of break the lines of the building. So it really, you know, like an idea on, you know, what you'd like to, you know, the block construction or the pole barn construction, there's a little bit additional cost for the, the block building, but in the grand scheme, this building's going to be there for 50 years, so it's, it's the City of Assumptions Water Plant, I would say it's not mine, you know, I want you guys to get what you want. The, you know, other ideas, other topics are like, you know, you know, putting a fence around it, the EPA does like the security aspect of having a secure building, of course we'll have locks and everything on the doors, but also concrete, you know, in front of and around the building, you know, what's our asphalt, rock drive, uh, you know, just, just minor things like landscaping, sidewalk in front of the building, you know, sign in front of it, so do we want City of Assumption Water Plant? You know, I like to get these questions out there to get some feedback from the board on what you'd like to see, and I'm not looking for, you know, a, you know, approval, this is that way that it's going to be, you know, for the next Water Committee meeting, we'll have some, maybe some drawings and whatnot, and we can kind of present something further, and then, you know, get something formal, but I'd like a general consensus of, you know, what the city would like to see, so.
Perfect.
So I'd like some feedback if I can get it, you know, from the board.
Myself, I think concrete block would be the best to have, I mean, it's going to be there a long time, and, you know, if we had tornadoes or whatever, it's going to be safer than the pole barn, the pole building.
It would, the building will definitely be designed for, you know, current building code, so a pole barn building absolutely can withstand a tornado if it's designed appropriately. Now, you get a, you know, a, you know, level five tornado, it's going to tear down whatever it's there, and, and I'm not sure a masonry building, you know, the roof may even build withstand that, so, but absolutely, I think the, you know, a pole, no, I'm sorry, a masonry So, but absolutely, I think the, you know, a pole, or not, sorry, a masonry building would look, you know, very good, you know, in that, that location, you know, right in front of fifty-one, so.
I think-
I'm kind of partial to that, but that's not my, you know, it's not my decision, so.
So what, what exactly do you want us to give you feedback on? Because you're the engineer.
Absolutely.
We're not engineers, we can, we can give you aesthetic appeal, but that's about it.
That's all I really, yeah, I don't, I, I don't want to pick the, the block building, you know, I don't want to pick that it's a pole barn. I will, absolutely, Jack and I will, the, what's in the building, you know, that's, that's definitely how you guys will be able to pick colors later on. But, you know, the actual layout of the water treatment plant, and, you know, that's something that we have to design, you know, that meets current code and whatnot. But the, the ass, you know, yeah, the, you know, aesthetic pieces of the, the project, you know, I, you know, that's, that's what I'm asking for, and I'd like some, I'd like some guidance. I don't want to put together, start putting together, you know, pole barn construction, and then, you know, spend a lot of taxpayer dollars, and then you don't like it. And then I have to spin my wheels and go back around and do a, you know, block building, so.
We have to do what we can afford, obviously. I mean, and there's going to be a difference in price.
It's fifty thousand dollars.
I think you'd say fifty to seventy thousand is to do the block building. It is, you know, definitely a little more construction, you know, cost. I do, I do think it would look nice, but a pole barn would look nice too. You know, it's, it's just personal preference thing, really, more than anything.
Jack, what's your feeling?
Oh, I'm split face block for sure.
Yeah, so the split place, you know, you have your smooth face block, and the split face is just where it looks like, excuse me, a stone. And then you could have your different colors, you know, I'm sure you've seen buildings where they have a split face block, and then, you know, might have a color, you know, in the middle of it. And all those details I don't need, I just need to know if you want to do a block building or, you know, some other type of construction. But yeah.
I would say, you know, the overall cost of the project is somewhere around two and a half million dollars. The product of a block compared to a pole barn building is something around fifty thousand dollars is, I think it's another rail personally. But like Mark said, you know, the real guts of it are what I'm concerned about, so, you know.
And then, you know, you know, the, I think it sounds like, you know, the block is what those are, you know, on the, it sounds like what's, we're, we're interested in, and I like that idea. And then, the fence aspect of just, you know, for security, you know, I definitely do recommend it, you know, at least around the backside of the, the property. That's just, you know, the EPA likes the security aspect of it. Concrete, you know, or rock is, you know, that does come in cost. Maybe we can do the concrete drive later on, and we just put rock now. So I can, I can probably work with, you know, I can make the footprint of the, the approach in the parking lots. And then we can really decide probably on the concrete later on, or the asphalt or whatnot. I can make it, I can make it work. It needs to have at least a rock drive, you know, rock, rock access. It's just going to be a nice new building, and I don't want, I wouldn't want it to look like a rock drive, I guess. I prefer, you know, an asphalt or concrete, you know, this is going to be a new, nice new building envisioned, and, you know, a year, a year and a half, you're going to be doing a groundbreaking ceremony, and everybody's going to be standing on a rock. You know, that doesn't, doesn't lend itself to what, what you may, what you may want anyways. So, I don't know, those are just, those are just a couple, you know, topics. I don't know, was there anything else, Jack, that we shouldn't, you know, aesthetically pleasing, you know?
I don't think so. Mark, you're going to go with the fence material and parking and drive.
Yeah.
I mean, we can get into the, the landscape, you can do the ladder and stuff.
Yeah, those are pretty minor costs. The, the block and the concrete and the fence, I mean, fence is not very, you know, costly, but, you know, I just like to get, if, if you guys are agreeing with that, I think that's the way we, the way we move forward with block, concrete, and, you know, doing the fence around at least the backside. And then landscaping and things like that, you know, I can have some sort of, something prepared and for, you know, for presentation, but those are really- The building is probably the most expensive part of me starting getting, you know, getting that design, you know, you know, going and finished to get permitting process. So all the other pieces are. The other, I guess, the other idea is, you know, do you want to have a, you know, lower level, you know, in the front where you have just a one-story, and then have the big equipment area for the water treatment plant? Are we just going to do a large, you know, building that's going to have a, you know, eighteen-foot, you know, front to the, to the front of the building? Or do we want to break up the lines? You know, I don't know if anybody, if you know John Wholehouse's house, kind of, or not house, but, you know, his pole barn building, where it's kind of just got a lower kind of office area. Really just, you know, I think that would be more, you know, you know, more appealing, but I'd like to say that it's not mine, and it would cost a little bit more to do that, so. You know, different than what it would be just a, a square building.
What are your thoughts, Jack?
Yeah, I mean, my original thought was to put, you know, have a mess and use some storage up there, but as far as, it will aesthetically look a lot better to have an office in front of the building.
And I, and I think we would still have the storage in the equipment area, because we're just going to have chemical feeds.
Right, it's just smaller than the-
Yes, yeah. I think that's what I'm, I'm going to go with, if everybody's fine with that, we'll have, you know, kind of like a little, you know, upfront, and this will be further, for further discussion. I just want to make sure I'm getting that discussion going and having that conversation, so. I'll bring it, I'll bring it up again at water committee and hope to have some kind of drawings and ideas of what, what we're, what we're looking at.
I think what we're kind of envisioning is a lot along the lines of the Leekwood water plant. We talked about, you know, having a trip out there before, still open, and arrange that. If anybody wants to go check and see what a new water plant looks like.
Maybe we should. At least the water should.
So, let me go.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Next is discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system phase two project items is properly brought to the board.
Oh, yeah, this is just an update. I mean, we, we, you know, the, we're moving forward, we have, you know, the application turned in. We're looking at, like I said, you know, spring, spring bidding and starting, you know, construction spring and summer, and, you know, fall next few years, so. That's basically it. That is for the northwest part of the city, I'm sure.
Okay, next, is, is there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Only the best, and you know, and Don Dust's widow. Bitteral and hate, I saw here this evening was the least professional of any committee I've ever sat on. Hollering about who got more votes, or I won, and, and she shouldn't be appointed. That is disgusting. You need to work together. A small town like this has no place for partisan politics or stupid little feuds. And I am embarrassed for my town because of your behavior, especially you two. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sir?
I'd just like to thank the Alder, Alder folks, people, the work at IML. It's always good to see local officials actually taking that step to learn more. And it was great to see up there, it was a great conference. I don't know if you've ever been mayor, have you ever been up to that?
Yes, one time.
You ever go as a mayor?
Never as a mayor.
Well, it's a-
Just don't let me have days off like that.
My hat's off to you for going. I wish more public bodies, those officials would go, we wouldn't have the problems we do and save.
Anything else?
Folks. I do have something, it's something I missed. I'm sorry, I'll let the public go first. Go ahead, go, John.
I miss gathering your observation. If the alderman could review whether or not they can actually vote present or abstain or not vote at all, I'm pretty sure. Not for tonight, for in the future. We'll understand that an extension goes with the majority votes, the votes actually in what four to, to a point y'all. But in the future, I don't think anybody can not vote.
You're always entitled to abstain.
Uh, no, no.
No? I mean, I've, I've always-
I can text it case law.
I don't need it, I'm sure I'll see it.
Roger, I think this was the same issue that came up like that meal a long time ago with the-
The warrant sheets?
Yeah, when paying the warrant sheets, so.
Okay.
So, prosser.
Okay.
What is it called again?
Prosser Rule, it's a prosser base, addresses the issue, issue of how an extension is, and the statute actually outlines what conditions you can abstain for voting. There are certain criteria that's outlined.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Generally only if you have a conflict of interest in something.
Okay.
Do Jeremiah and Remington want to talk about by there here? No, we had to talk about a finance, about you guys and your, and your business. You want to talk about it?
Yeah, we're just trying to sort of like a little, wouldn't say like huge, or part of my car, used car dealership man.
Yeah.
And we're going to use Joyce's building next to the nineteen oh five. And we're just going to see if we can use two parking spots across the street to put two vehicles there.
I don't know which one of you I talked to on the phone, okay? And like I said, you know, and I did bring it to the board. As long as you guys don't, I mean, obviously, across the street is fine, and I thought we had discussed three spots. But two, three, whatever, as long as they're not junk cars, and as long as they're not, you know, and then I know, I think you told me, you would move them at night if, if you had two or whatever. The board is being really flexible with you guys, because we want to see you guys having small business, you know, we want it to work for you.
Where on the street? Down there at the very end on-
They're just going to use the parking spots on, on the side of the street. They can't use the side that their office is going to be on, or, you know, anything near the fire department.
Yeah, I was, I don't want to be, you know, we don't want to hassle with that or anything like that.
You visit the ninety, it's her building by nineteen oh five. Your guys are written, the little office space next to the military bank.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just at the corner of this street near the-
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we'll only have two, we have two dealers' places that we're getting from the state, and we're fully insured, so all that's already, we take care of. And we only have two dealers' places, we won't be able to have two vehicles up there at a time.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I was, I was happy, I mean, brother, I was cracking pork, because, you know, I don't want it to wear people's mouths, setting up, you know, yard sales up the middle of the street. So, I mean, it's fine, as, as long as it's, you know, good vehicles, and the minute you start changing the oil and the tires out in the street, well, then that's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it is, it is a business, we are getting tax money from you guys through, through the vehicles that you sell.
Yeah.
And I talked to Joyce about it as well.
Yeah, this is my hometown side, I don't want to go anywhere else besides here, you know, I mean, so. But it's on the corner, not by the, better.
No, it's on the corner right here. He dismissed the vote.
Yeah.
Like where the, the charity bank is, her little office building, that's where it's for, too?
Where the leather shop is.
For the holster.
Yeah, okay.
Well, guys, I mean, as long as you do what the board asks of you, I don't think you have a problem. They're still listening cheaper. Yeah. Yeah. Any more public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, with that being said, we are going to go into closed session.
Roger, Joe and I will-
I still got, I got a question for Mark. It's okay. I missed something about going back to the water, the plant building, so. About that property that we're purchasing for the water plant, is there an issue with that property at all?
As of now, I don't, we, we're doing, we're doing the environmental sign-offs, so I can't, I can't answer that.
The EPA is involved in that, aren't they?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Jack?
Not that I'm aware of that.
We're trying to get environmental clearances pulled, and if the state has anything on that property, it's going to get found in the environmental clearances.
Yes, we, we don't, we don't have any knowledge of it in public record of, of that, that specific property.
So that plume that has been discovered out in that area has nothing to do with that-
I would, I would recommend that we, I know you're, you're trying to reference, you know, a lust site, which is across the road. I would recommend that we approach, if you're looking into it, you need to get more information from a, you know, somebody that's done a study rather than myself in regards to that. That's, that's not for necessarily, I mean, we can definitely talk, talk about it in public, but that is a specialty, you know, engineers that, that investigate and, you know, do that information. We do not have that, you know, specific for that, that location, that, you know, that, that site that we're talking about purchasing. Now, I can't say that something won't come up, but that's, you know, that's why we do the environmental clearances. I, I, I'm not a regulating authority, I guess that's why I always like to say, that's what, that's what they are for. And so that, that, that definitely, you know, we, we do have to do the environmental clearances and, and, you know, see where, where that, where the project goes, but-
You foresee a problem?
I, I don't necessarily, but I, I can't tell you until, you know, until we get further into it, so.
Anything else? All right, I'm going to, we're going to go into executive session, folks, and like I said, welcome to come back, a little more than half.
We have to vote on that. Janet, I can meet most of your votes.
Janet, I want you to put in the meeting minutes, this is a closed meeting pursuant to section C one and C three. For discussion of appointment, employment compensation, discipline, appointment basically of employees.
Can we have the votes? Yeah, yeah, we're on the exact one second, so. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Say that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yes.
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Burges?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so they're in executive session, I'm going to turn the audio off till we get back inside.
Okay, so they're in executive session. I'm gonna turn the audio off till we get back inside.
All right, welcome back in everybody. Yeah. You guys rolling? You got my good side? All right.
Thank you to everyone for sticking it out.
Yep.
That wasn't a decision we did not take lightly. You all made it very difficult.
Very good applications from everybody. Unfortunately, the board has chosen one person, and I thank everybody for coming, but the board has chosen Angel.
Roger is going to make the nomination.
I am nominating Angel Palmer for the new City Treasurer of the City of Assumption. City Council vote to make the motion to nominate Angel Palmer for the Treasurer of the City of Assumption?
I'll second that.
Smith?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I thank you all. I mean, it was a... The board kicked it around, every person, every... You know, they were all good resumes. I mean, you couldn't really lose... You know, it just... The board voted. So that's the...
Do we want to swear in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Angel, if you'll come step forward, raise your right hand for me. Repeat it after me, please. "I, Angel Palmer..."
"I, Angel Palmer..."
"...do solemnly swear that..."
"I do solemnly swear that..."
"...I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois..."
"The Constitution of the State of Illinois."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of treasurer..."
"And I will faithfully discharge the duties of treasurer."
"...to the best of my ability."
"To the best of my ability."
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, last but not least, is there any... Is there any public comments? Are we all good there? I thought that I want to turn in former Treasurer Dan Rees' key and card, and Debbie's resignation. I got Alderman Coughlin's resignation. And at this point, I got my resignation. I'm going to turn them over to Derek. And the point being, Linda hit the nail right on the head. You know, I really feel that if I could do it all over, I wouldn't have let a couple of aldermen take it to a personal level with me. Because once they got to that personal level, then I wasn't conducted city business like I was voted in and wanted an election to do. There's a lot of hate and discontent on this board. I was riding around with Joe going over some zoning stuff. And Joe told me, he says, "Roger, you know," he said, "the biggest problem with your board is no one wants to take accountability." Well, that stuck with me for a long time. You know, the accountability... My accountability as mayor is to do what's best for this city. It would be easy to stand up here. I know where I stand with each person that sits around this table. And I'm okay with that. You know, I would like to... I got all, you know, my keys to the office. I told Derek what my password was. I would like to see Alderman Page... That's who I would nominate to take my seat for the remainder of my term. Because quite frankly, he's the most experienced on the board right now. And, you know, the board, obviously, you know, I... Like I said, I'm going to take as much blame as anybody else. Because I let you guys knock me off my square, a couple of you. And, you know, I couldn't do my job after I allowed it. And do it the way that I was... Took a note to do. So... And Joe Meeks little lecture to me about accountability. Well, I feel accountable. It's not my place to sit and take taxpayers' money every month to do a job that two or three residents and a couple of aldermen won't allow me to do. So I'm hoping by me stepping down, this board will give it to Derek and then let Derek start fresh and open-minded and don't follow in my tracks. You know, because, you know, when you got a temper... And like I said, I was good until it got personal. And then I couldn't get past the personal. And that's no one's fault out here, or no one's fault... Well, it is some's fault in here. But we're adults, and we're going to move past that. These guys, these Edgar County watchdogs, if they've taught me anything in this situation, I know as mayor, I don't have a leg to stand on as far as holding people accountable. But as a taxpayer, I have all kinds of legs to stand on to hold people accountable for the way I've been treated in a lot of different areas. So... And that's not going to solve nothing. That's not going to make anything better for the city. I'm just saying, you know, give Derek a fair shot. And, you know, I think he can help this community, and I think he can help the board go in the right direction. I wasn't helping the board go in the right direction. And I know these guys from Edgar County are... They have professional jobs on the side. You know, I've seen what this group, you know, they... They, in their eyes, they may have helped Shelby County out. But in my eyes, you know, I think this is a little much. I think, you know, our guys going to the IML conference, like he said, it's a great experience. I only got to go one time. It was a good experience. But I don't believe in... I can't handle no more of the drama and the chaos and the fighting. And I'm just... My mother-in-law just passed away last week. I'm getting married in another week. I've got a lot of stuff going on. I'm down to about 11 months till I retire from the state. And I want to start fresh. And I'm not going to come and hold up the growth of the City of Assumption. So, I mean, like I said, I appreciate all you guys. I, you know, I didn't get a chance to talk to Brian and Pete, but I did spend some time this afternoon with the other workers. And I just feel 100% confident that Derek can lead this town in the right direction. So... And take care of our workers. You know, so it's all I got, folks. I mean, I'm done. My resignation is as of right now.
Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate everything you've done, Roger, for all your 24 years of service. To the board and to the public, I admire each and every one of you. Each of... We have all grown together in so many great ways. And I want to continue that growth. We all bring so many different ideas to the table. And I want to see that those ideas continue to grow. I want everybody to come up with five things that they want to see the city do in '22. And we'll get those things done. I want to see Joe and I work on you guys increasing your jobs, your roles in with the city and with the employees. So I thank you. I would like to schedule a special meeting on Tuesday at 6 o'clock to swear me in as acting mayor, to serve as mayor pro temp from this point on till the special meeting.
There's a process. The city council votes among... Appoints and then votes among themselves to fill that position, so...
Yes. So we'll do that at the special meeting.
Sure.
Yes, on the 12th. So that's what I'd like to do. But each and every one of you, I'll be over to talk to you so that we can get the city going. But it's a blank canvas for everybody, for our city employees, for us as a whole. And I will resign my seat so long as you guys accept me. I'll resign my seat on the 12th. And it'll be a goal to get a new alderman appointed at the November meeting. I will be transparent, and we will post on Facebook. We will put it out there that we want somebody in for Ward 1. I expect Melody can be that point person, as she is the... She'll, you know, is now the junior person for Ward 1 alderman. So we'll have to work together and get somebody good appointed. So, thank you.
Roger, I just want to say, you know, thank you for everything you've done for the community. I can remember years ago when you were a cop. There's a lot of kids, a lot of young adults in this town right now that would probably have a couple of charges on their record. Had you not coached them out of trouble that they were getting themselves into, you could have easily hauled them to jail and gave them a charge. But instead, you worked with them and turned them... Some of those kids around. And the years of service that you've done as an alderman. It's... I'm sorry that you are giving up something that you love. But on to your next chapter, man. I do appreciate it.
We've got to do what's best for the city. This is a new page, new chapter. Good luck, Derek.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I... You're the watchdog.
It's all good. I don't mind... But that is one thing that we will go... I know some people don't like with the recording. We are going to... don't like with the, with the recording. We are going to, you know, to record. I, I feel that that is the way that the, the world is going. We can be on the forefront of that, so. That's something that we're going to kind of work over this month, get something done, maybe for a Canon camera, so we're not doing it with our own cameras on face supply, but, you know, I am, I am for that, so. I guess we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All right.